This regular board meeting will be recorded and uploaded to our district website. Our official documentation and decisions of the board are noted in our meeting minutes. Any use of electronic devices such as computers or cell phones that you see during the meeting is related to the business of the meeting. The core values that guide the work of the school district are respect, compassion, honesty, responsibility, and relationships. And we're calling this meeting to order at 5:31, acknowledging that today's board meeting is being held within the traditional territory of the Deneza and Treaty 8. And I'm coming to you from the lands of the Suk Nation and the Pachetanet Nation. Additions to the agenda. Can I get a mover and a seconder for the agenda, please? Moved by Thomas, seconded by David. Two additions to the agenda. Northern Interior Branch Report Out under BCSTA 11.1 and Remembrance Day Ceremonies under Unfinished Business. With those two additions, I'm calling the question, all in favor? The agenda is accepted. And I know Stephen's going to do an introduction, but I'm very excited to have the upcoming presentation. I really want to thank both Stephen and the presenters for coming. Any of us as trustees, if we come across something that we think would be a good presentation to the board, can reach out to Stephen and say, could you see if somebody would come and talk? So that's how today happens. So I'll turn it over to you, Stephen.
Thanks, Helen. It's a real pleasure to have Ms. Triska, our vision teacher here, along with two of our students currently in grade 12, Summer and Irina. And we'll probably grill you after the presentation on, you know, what you're doing next and that sort of thing. But I'm going to hand it over to you. They have a presentation on their April trip to the Bamfield Marine Science Camp for visually impaired high school students. So I'm going to hand it over to you.
My name is Trista Triska, and I am very honored to be the vision teacher in this district and to work with such amazing students. We got to go along on a field trip. There were nine students. They're vision teachers and University of British Columbia came with us. Next slide. We could not have made this trip happen without funding. It cost more than $30,000 and most of it was fundraised without cost to the students. So I thank you for allowing me the time to go and I will be coming back for further trips for our vision students. Next slide.
Hi there. My name is Summer Fraser. I'm in grade 12. I have ocular albinism and nystagmus and I'm looking to go to university for speech pathology.
Hi, my name is Irene Fendle. I'm also in grade 12 and I have a condition called nystagmus. And I currently go to the college here in town for dual credit and I'm taking applied business pathology. Got the opportunity to learn from local media elders, indigenous elders.
After that, we got to go clean up a beach nearby. It was a beautiful beach. We collected about nine bags of garbage and a giant inflatable, surprisingly. There was a lot of surprising finds there that you wouldn't really think to find, but there was certainly a lot. Next slide, please.
Just before we move on, Leah, would you mind zooming into the screen just so Bill and Helen don't have to squint there? And then we'll zoom back out when we finish it. Thank you. Wonderful. Sorry. Go ahead.
We got a lot of hands-on experiences with learning, which you wouldn't normally get in like a school environment, which is really special to us because we can't really see well in schools. So letting us like touch everything is like very special because it gave us a new way of learning.
After that, we did a marine investment at the first city lab, which was really cool because a lot of these creatures are like a little bit lower in the ocean. They're not that easy to get access to. And it was so cool that we actually got to touch most of them. I think there were a few that we weren't able to, but majority of them we got to touch. It was a very rare experience. We also got to learn about ocean plastics and how they affect our ocean, and not only the fish, but the birds are around as well, which is not something I think most people think about, especially how it affects the birds.
We got to look at the health of the ocean floor through dredging where we scoop out the ocean floor and see what types of creatures live down there. It was really fun. Next slide, please.
After that, we did a seaweed lab where we got to learn more about seaweed and what kinds of seaweed they are. Little fun fact, the color of the seaweed depends on how much pigment is in it, which varies by how much sunlight can get down to what part of the ocean it's in, which I thought was cool. Then we got to go on a temperate, pretty horse hike where we got to learn about different plants, mushrooms, trees within the area, which was also really cool. They got to use low vision tools, which is very nice because I know for me personally, you can feel kind of like singled out when using tools because not a lot of people need to. I also appreciate that the staff there wanted to learn what they could improve and had asked us and I hope, and from what I can tell, listened to what we said, which was really nice and so appreciated. Next slide.
We made lots of friends along the way and it was really special because they all had similar conditions to us. So we all like to connect and interact with each other in a special way and relate to each other. And we all still talk to this day. We're all still friends. Next slide, please.
I can attest to the lasting impact of these trips. So the reason University of British Columbia, my professors came with us, they were doing a study on the impact of trips such as this on our visually impaired students. There was impact. The instructors, the scientists at Bamfield said to us that it was the most memorable experience that they have ever had as educators. My learning as a vision teacher was phenomenal and the takeaway from these girls, it was life-changing. Next slide, please. So there is us in the pouring rain. I would like in the future to take, there's a student in grade three who is aspiring to go to Space Camp. We have Blind Beginnings trips and events for any student up to grade 12. And I would like to start a Northern Adventures, starting with an Indigenous Day, hopefully in the spring. Next slide. Questions or comments?
Terrific. So Helen, it's okay. We'll open it up for questions and comments from trustees. And I can see people here. What, any questions? Yes.
Nicole.
Do we have a number? Like how many students would we have in our district that are visually impaired?
So my, I have a very black line that I'm allowed to pick up students. They have to be 20 over 70 acuity or worse. I have nine students and then three more that I'm supporting on a consultation.
David.
Each of you, what was the high, the high of the whole trip? What was the best part?
For me personally, it was making all the friends along the way and they were like also similar to me. And yeah, I was just able to interact with everybody and we became really good friends at the end. And also the learning, it was so much fun going out into the ocean, like the, yeah, the open ocean. It was amazing. I'm learning about all the creatures and stuff. It was, it was life-changing, yeah.
Thank you.
I had a lot of things I enjoyed about it. I just personally really liked marine biology. It was an opportunity that I just simply couldn't pass up. I have to agree with Irina's statement. I have met, I think, before this trip, I had met one other kid with albinism. That is it. And I don't ever see them. So it was really nice to meet somebody else with the same condition as me because I don't have people to relate to me with that. Sure, there's people with nystagmus and things like that, but it's not the same, especially even like the physical aspect. So it was so nice to meet somebody who had those social.
Changed, changed you. Good. Made you better. Good work or, or, absolutely. I can't, words are escaping me, but.
You know, like I learned a lot of surprising things about my vision too that I just didn't think about. The stagnus, I didn't know this before this trip, but there's a null point. So like a certain way you can have your eyes where the shaking will kind of stop. I didn't learn that until I got to speak to others there who were telling me this and I was like, what? This is a thing? Oh my God.
Very good. Thank you.
Thomas.
So I know you kind of started elaborating on it, but the hope is to have something a little more local then in the future, similar to what, maybe not the exact same, but a different twist on.
So last year, I really started trying to bring our students together. I really want, it's important. It's huge. And then also giving our kids opportunity to go somewhere else where there's a bigger population of visually impaired students. So both.
Ida.
Yeah, you kind of started to talk about someone in grade three that looked at doing things like that. Is there very many opportunities for the younger kids to go out and do some of this because?
This was for our academic high school students only. And so the two vision teachers you saw who facilitated this are going to do it again in about two years.
I'm interested, Irina and Summer, like in your education back here in SD60, you know, over the years, I suppose, what would be one challenge that has been hard to overcome? And one thing that has sort of gone well in the school system for you?
Well, the main thing is seeing the notes on the whiteboard. Like even if I'm sitting in the front desk, it's still kind of hard for me to see because my vision is very low. And I feel like a big thing is the computer-based learning nowadays. Because like everything, I can like, everything's right in front of me. I can like zoom in on my computer and stuff and it's just like way easier and it doesn't make me feel awkward. So I have to go up to the board and look at it.
Technology's helping, obviously. Thank you. Summer.
I will have to say, I know I've been here since like the fourth grade and even just starting. I didn't have a consistent vision teacher. So getting that help, getting the devices, getting the support wasn't easy. It's gotten so much better since I've had Trista. She's so much. But I kind of agree with what Irina said. Before that, it was just so hard to get tech and things to help me see things on the board. And even just some teachers not quite understanding my vision at the same time just made things so much harder, even with communication and all that. Now I find it easier because in the high school, a lot of stuff is available online and if it's not, I can get it online. Textbooks were another big thing, which again, in recent years have gotten better at getting textbooks. So that's starting to go pretty well as well.
Thank you.
So on that note, Irina, I think you said you're doing dual credit? And that is seamless? That works with a college as well? Like you get the support there?
I have an accessibility teacher there too, and she's helping me out a lot. She's offered me large print textbooks. And they gave me like a special chair and like my computer, I get to sit in the front of the class and everything. So they've been helping me a lot there too, yeah.
I guess if that's what you're looking forward to as well, Summer, is that correct?
Yes, I've already been starting to look at things for university as well.
As far as the whiteboard goes, is there, is there an option that's better? Like is it, is it, it's not like the color of the whiteboard, the color of the felt? There's just, if we're chalkboards, better. Do you know what I mean? Like it's the distance. There's nothing.
Kind of. I don't know. You can correct me if I'm wrong, but for me, it's part of it is the distance, but part of it is my nystagmus where I simply can't focus on the writing without my eyes shaking, which again, makes me nauseous. Some colors are easier to see on the whiteboard, like blacks are my preferred. But even then, it doesn't matter the distance. I have to be like a write there to be able to see it simply because A, it's far away. I can't see that far. And B, my nystagmus, geez, makes it harder to see because again, my eyes are continuously shaking, which can make me nauseous looking at small words and things like that.
Yeah, tech makes a big difference, right? In terms of one of the solutions. Yes. This actually might be more of a question for you, Stephen. What programs do we have in, for our younger students to identify them and make sure that they're getting the support? It's not just at the high school level, but those younger grades as well.
So since I've started, I, I've been asking questions and so has everyone else because they want to know what I do. I've only finished my degree a year ago, so I'm still new to. And so our teachers, our learning assistance teachers are bringing me files and saying, here, I'm noticing students who have nystagmus and shaking eyes. And I'm phoning parents and saying, hey, we're referring parents to the optometrist and ophthalmologist. And it's, it's becoming a lot more widely known. The biggest thing is we need those eye reports.
Based on the medical assessment and that threshold that Triska was talking about? Helen and Bill, and any other thoughts from you guys?
Well, because Trista's just new, one of the questions I had is we lost kindergarten vision screening province-wide. And they haven't said when they're going to put it back and what was in. And I wondered if we had more kids within the system with vision issues because that kindergarten screening is gone. And whether that's something that we keep in the back of our minds in terms of advocacy. But it's not probably a fair question of Trista at this point.
I a hundred percent agree with you because then it wouldn't be, oh, this student in grade one who I happened to notice has nystagmus. And I phoned the parents. We could have caught him in kindergarten. We need to catch these students before Irina only come onto my radar a year ago. Irina had no support from K to grade 11. We need support from K to grade 11. How did this happen? That's exactly a problem.
And nystagmus is, is one that people don't always understand and acknowledge the degree of difficulty it, it presents. Because you can still see, but it's the functionality that's really impacted. So it takes courage to share your story. Both of you have post-secondary aspirations. So one of the goals that we have sometimes for our students is that they go on with self-advocacy skills. So do you, as you move to post-secondary, know how to get the things that you need in that environment?
Irina, you start because you've had to advocate at the college level this year.
Yes, I have, and it has helped me out a lot. And also I met with a doctor, Menkula, and he also told me how to advocate at the higher end universities like UNBC, the University of British Columbia and all those big ones. So I will also have accessibilities at those big schools, I believe, which is very exciting for me.
Thank you. I just recently applied for universities and I'm just kind of waiting for an acceptance letter for those. As soon as I get that, I am going straight to their alts. Yeah, they have, they have an accessibility place that I can go to. So I'm going straight to that. I was talking to my counselor and I think it's possible for me just to transfer my IEP to the university. I need to look more into that, but I don't have a problem advocating for myself. I know what helps me.
Thank you. Bill, did you have any questions or comments?
It's, it's just great to hear that, you know, you're not letting things hold you back and you're going forward and forward and forward kind of thing. Years and years ago in the eighties, I worked at a blind school for a while. And it was quite interesting. I mean, I learned a lot, but you know, it's, I, I, you know, just, it's, I love seeing that, you know, people can, with different diversities can, you know, go forward and show the day and new things. It's awesome, ladies.
It's great. And Helen, if you don't mind, I have a little gift here for the Summer and Irina, very small, $10 to give to you. Tim, we really appreciate taking your time to come to talk to all of our trustees. And also for Ms. Triska, who she mentioned education and so she's really committed to the district. And I started this education a couple of years ago and, and always with the intention of supporting SLOVSD60. So thank you for that.
Thank you for inviting us tonight. It's an honor to be here. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
And I was just going to say, we do have an accessibility committee in place. And if there are things that that committee needs to hear about that make our buildings and our classrooms work better for our students, that's an important thing for you to know.
I'm actually on that committee for the province.
So thank you very much for coming and we'll let you get on with your, with your evening or stick around. Thank you very much. Wow.
I found that very interesting.
That was impactful.
Bamfield's a life-changing experience for any students that are lucky enough to get there. But given the challenges, it's pretty special for those two young ladies to have been there. So.
See cucumbers at Bamfield myself.
Squishy. Gishy. All right, we'll move on to, and again, if you have run across things out there, we can tap Stephen and they can come to our board table as a presentation. So keep that in mind. Trustee engagement and celebrations. We'll start with trustee Campbell.
Yes, first of all, I'd like to thank other trustees that did our deliveries for our appreciation week. Today I did some training for the voting for the provincial council meeting that is this Friday and Saturday. And tomorrow I'll be going to Sue PAC meeting. And then on here, I also had that I would attend the Remembrance Day in Taylor. And as you all know, I was away and I actually had some new technology, laser surgery done for the metal set I had in my leg when I had the problem with the metal separating. I went to Count Loops. They did one session of laser on it to remove the muscles from the metal. And they will be doing two more later on this year. But it was quite an exciting thing to have happen with.
So the metals are stuck to the muscles and that.
And that's what was causing it because the metals, the muscle would pull the metal. So then they strengthened the muscle to put it straight with laser.
So do you feel anything?
Yeah, it did the first day after it really kind of burnt a little bit, but no. It's not as painful as it is when the metals are moving. It was very interesting to have that.
So happy wandering trustee Gillis.
I went to the barbecue at Hudson's Hope, like the beginning of September. I think I said that at the last one though, so I can't use that one again. I attended the PAC meeting last week at Hudson's Hope. I was at the volleyball tournament this weekend with the seven, eight, nine group at Burfords, Hudson's Hope. That's about it.
Thank you. Vice Chair Lehman.
I attended the NIB in Prince George. Did the DUPAC, E-PAC, was at the opening for the upper halfway. Yes, we did hand out goodie trays and it was, there were lots of smiles coming our way. So they're actually fun to deliver. I attended the Clearview PAC as well as actually Charter Lake and RRO, and I was surprised at numbers. I would say all three probably had nine people in attendance and no issues. So that was good to see. Attended a health and safety committee meeting, did a lunch with with the D-PAC executive.
Thank you. Trustee Scott Moncrief.
I've been in contact with all of my schools. I delivered the trays. That was a lot of fun. Chatted with, I was up at the upper halfway in that and been chatting with Buick just recently, so quite a bit.
Thank you. Trustee Snow.
Alrighty. So obviously I haven't been to as many places as normal, but I did make it down to the NIB and also out to upper halfway for the opening there. It was great to see the kids out there playing on those toys. And then I went to the high school for unveiling of a shadow box that they have up there now. And I think that's it. Again, I want to echo what Ida said about thanking you guys for delivering the treats. I've heard some nice comments about them. Thanks a lot.
Trustee Witten.
Okay, so I did some deliveries at North Peas Secondary, Bowes, ALC Central and Ambrose. I got to visit them, but it was in the wrong spot. So I got right around on that one, which was good because I got to pop in and visit anyway.
I own that one.
It's okay. When I got there and they already had a tray, I was like, this smells monkey. It's been a while. Also, it was at the Family Campa Weekend with Petroleum Association back in August and I got hitched.
Oh, I thought you were hitched.
I got married end of August.
To the woman that I thought you were probably already hitched to.
No, a different one. I would have to imagine so.
So Thomas, we hope to see some pictures, but when I'm there. So, your wedding.
There's lots online.
Oh, okay. Well. Okay, thank you. So for me, I got to go to a key PAC meeting and it was quite different because they're running that, an online learning program. So there was a bit different conversation about connection. I attended the D-PAC meeting, did a lot of organization for the NIB meeting and the BCSTA learning series that was held in Prince George. And I'm continuing, upper halfway gym opening. I had the pleasure of ordering gym equipment and I want to thank Stephen and Angela for indulging me and letting me do that. And teaching some of those little primary kids how to hop on the bouncy balls was just too much fun. So, and I'm still continuing to chair the rural and remote network. And we had a meeting on October the 8th and I want to thank staff for their continued support as I request random information to help me in the work. And sometimes we don't think we're making perhaps the impact that we would like. But when I hear Carolyn Brody as the president of the BCSTA stating in her advocacy work around at election time that we need to think outside the box related to staff training and build in community opportunities for training, especially in the north, our, our message is getting out there. And so we need to celebrate that. And I did lots of delivery of goodie trays to lots of different sites and managed to deliver Hudson's Hope on my way to Victoria. So tied lots of adventures in. So that's where we're at.
You drove to Victoria?
Yeah.
You were.
Yep. So we're going to move on to item number five in our agenda. Minutes of the regular board meeting of September the 23rd, 2024, and it's pages six to 14 in your package. I'll give you a chance to look at those. Can I get a mover and a seconder, please? Moved by Madeline, seconded by Bill. Any errors or omissions? Calling the question then, all in favor? In favor over here. Business arising. I'm not sure we have any. But if anybody else feels we do. Okay. Moving on then to item six. Approval of excerpts of the regular board meeting of September twenty-third, which is page fifteen in your agenda package. Right. Could I get a mover and a seconder, please? Moved by David, seconded by Ida. Any errors or omissions? Calling the question then, all in favor, in favor here. That's carried. We're looking at.
Have to change the heading there because it wasn't the September twenty-third, it was the June seventeenth.
June seventeenth, okay, we need to change that in the minutes. Thank you. Or in the, yeah. Thanks for catching that, Madeline.
Well, Angela beside me was muttering.
She can speak up. No, I'm teasing her. Um. Okay, item number seven now, approval of the excerpts of the regular in-camera board meeting of June the twenty-fourth, which is page sixteen in your package. And I'm not giving you very much time to read it because it's one line. So calling the question on that, can I get a mover and a seconder, please? Moved by Bill, seconded by Madeline. All in favor? Right, moving on to announcements and reminders. And did anybody else notice? I think we're missing the November board meeting in our list of things that we're doing. We need a board meeting in there, regular board meeting in there on the eighteenth of November.
We'll put it in there.
Okay, and is anybody besides Ida able to go to DPAC while I have you all in one place? Ida?
I, I just have a question. Is DPAC still at eleven before the Sue Pack?
Yes, and we're always invited to attend that if we want to.
I was just checking to make sure it was still.
Yeah.
When's the, when is it?
Tuesday. Tuesday. Tomorrow.
I can make it.
Okay, so David's going to join Ida for that. Thank you. Any other things to add to our wonderful calendar? Right. We'll move on to item number nine, senior staff reports. We'll start with Stephen.
Thank you. Yeah, it's great. We're going to zoom in there and, uh, thanks Angela. Okay, so my online report, first item number, uh, actually no, uh, I number one is human resources, uh, summary report is there for your review. Under education, uh, number one is the online report. And again, it's lined up to have the same headings as the board strategic plan. So under student learning, intellectual development, I thought it would just be a good reminder, uh, we talked a fair, a bit about, uh, continuous improvement of the NIB in Prince George. And, uh, I think this is a good summary here in terms of the cycle of how we look at student achievement and our programs and strategies at the district as well as at the school level. So just another reminder for trustees and the public of some of the tools, timelines and procedures we have to look through, uh, how we're doing. I also thought the conclusion that I put in there, not sure if everyone had a chance to read that on that, uh, part of the report that I sent into the ministry, but it does highlight, I think, a fair bit of the work that this board does as well as our staff in terms of, uh, not only within our district, but advancing some of those advocacy pieces that Helen mentioned around the province as well. So I think those are things to, to celebrate and be aware of. And, and just, you know, to be somewhat upfront about some of the challenges, uh, we work with and, and, and especially in our schools with our principals and vice principals. This is always in the background. It's not an excuse, but it is always a challenge in terms of some of the achievement and moving forward with the, the staffing piece. Student and staff wellness, student attendance are a sort of capacity. Admin capacity and the composition and high needs continues to percolate, uh, in, in the district in different ways. So those are just some of the obstacles that we work through. Under student learning, just highlighting that there is, uh, a workshop this Friday. I believe it's already sold out, but several of our staff will be attending that called the circle of courage. It was put on by the city of Port St. John, but, uh, several of us are going to it. Under career and student learning, career and skill development, a bit of a profile there, uh, Mr. McCombs mushroom hunt and how the students got to go and learn a bunch about that, get some hands on. Again, it's part of that commitment around experiential learning. Also, uh, yeah, sorry, that was the, uh, the mushroom hunting. Under people development. Um, oh, sorry. And by the way, for career development, and I'm sorry Helen and Bill, but I have a handout at every trustee's place tonight, if you don't mind taking it out. And Helen, these are available at the front desk and they're kind of like a tear-off template. Gives trustees a bit of an overview. Uh, there's not a lot of detail, but you probably face questions sometimes, you know, what, what's happening around careers? This gives you a very high overview of some of the programming. And of course, Mr. Campbell provides more information to you throughout the year. So that's just a handy thing and we have these pads of info brochures available at different locations around the city. Under people development, uh, again, the work that, that the rural and remote committee is doing as well as the sort of pilot group that I've been involved in for the last two years, I just wanted to share with the public and the trustees a recent presentation, uh, from, from that team. And, and to show you that we have all of these northern districts participating in the northern bursary program. It's not the same thing as the Alberta bursary program we've talked about in the past. This is to provide up to eight thousand dollars for students just to do their final practicum in a northern district. There's no strings attached, there's no contract they have to sign to be able to work with Zachter, but it's a bit of a matchmaking process that leads up to that in the first place to see who might be interested in staying and working with us. So I believe we have a half a dozen students coming to our district and Wade and the team are, are, of course, worked on placing them. I believe for us, it's in the spring coming up, but these northern districts are getting them in the fall and the spring. And I also wanted to show you what I sort of presented at that meeting uh, in terms of some advantages of living in the north and working in the north. And so you can go through that yourself and I think it was well received by the students, particularly when I talked about the housing prices and, uh, space and, and even the traffic oddly enough. They, they really sort of connected with the idea of how traffic can make a big difference to your, to your day. And then, uh, cyber, it is cybersecurity month. And, uh, in your package, I've also included in connected to this online report, uh, how we're doing as a district. You will have noticed, for example, that ten-point checklist. Uh, and then after that, we've provided you with some specific pieces about how staff are responding to what is known to be really important aspects of cybersecurity as we move forward. The good news is, and thanks to people like Jason Jopio, our operation, our, uh, technology manager and Jared, Jared Bell, our director of instruction. ST sixty is in a good place. We are now embarking on items number one and two, which is multi-factor authentication uh, and staff training. So you, of course, were familiar with the initial rollout of that, uh, cybersecurity course. We've been able to abbreviate it a bit, right down to a video that's going to be rolling out across the district. This in November, December and January. And after that, any new staff or anyone who missed it will have to take that as a course as part of being employed in the district. And so that will be tracked. And, uh, but you can see that, uh, for all of these points on the checklist, we're, we're doing the best we can. And also understanding that no matter what, human error will always be there. And it's just a matter of how we can mitigate those things when it happens. So some information there. And then thanks to the board policy, we, we have it all the way up to the board policy as well as the ministry requests to make sure we're looking after this. Truth and reconciliation, I was at Finch on the Friday, therefore on shirt day and they had a number of activities and displays going on throughout the day as well as the drummers at the end of the day, lots of fun. Bill had mentioned the indigenous display case unveiling at the high school. That was lovely. It's actually a really well-done display case, but yeah, you have to take some time to look through all the artifacts. And then we had Jerry Attachi give us a really nice historical piece, uh, uh, Jerry from the Doyg there. And then finally trustees can look through, uh, take three celebrations from around the district, uh, central school, upper halfway, of course, the opening and Taylor Elementary School for the cross-country run. So that is my online report. Uh, I've already mentioned item number two, which is for information only on cybersecurity. And I would ask that items three and four be broken out for emotion. Thank you. That's my report.
Thank you. Can I please have a mover and a seconder for Stephen's report? Moved by Bill, seconded by Madeline. You picked somebody in the room because I can't see.
Cold waving.
Okay, Madeline, Bill and Nicole. All right, discussion. We'll look first of all at the human resources report, which is item one on Stephen's report before moving to his electronic report. I'm looking at Bill. He knows I am. So Stephen, the payout of prep, is that at the high school?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and, uh, I think you guys understand that one where we ask a teacher's willing to give up their fourth blog, their, their prep block and then they're paid out so that they can teach a class. So they teach for seven, like seven of the eight blocks. Couple of teachers though are willing to do eight of the eight blocks and we pay them out for their prep.
Yeah. Right, thank you.
So Stephen, that makes me wonder the question. If we see what the payout for, for prep is, can we find out what the payout for remedy is?
Not, not sure I know what you're asking me, Bill.
I'm confused.
Like you showed us how much we're paying, like we paid off, we paid prep out. Hey? But we, we have.
Remedy is a completely different calculation.
Yes, but are we paying the equivalent of three, four, five, ten, fifteen teachers? Like, I'm wondering, kind of thing.
That doesn't sort of fit within the HR report, but it's a question that Stephen might be able to do some research on or between you and him, you can refine the ask and see if there's a way of solving it.
Yeah, if it's okay, Bill, can you and I connect on that and absolutely happy to bring back, for example, a bit more background on remedy, for example.
Perfect, that's what I was going to say.
Yeah, sure. Thank you.
Right.
So the pale prep, um, is that because you need, you obviously need more teachers? Is that the only, you can only get four of them to commit or you actually only need four of them to do it?
We would only, have only needed that one at this point.
Do you find that people are willing to do it?
Uh, well, it's, 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 we're grateful for it. We don't, we would prefer not to have to ask. But when it all gets down to the last couple of courses, we've always had a couple of people willing.
Thank you. All right, moving on to the electronic report. Um, this is part of the, the framework. Documents that we looked at last month, but it reminds us monthly what we're supposed to be doing. The elephants were cute.
Yes.
Especially when the only, you eat an elephant one bite at a time and those are such big issues. So.
They really are.
I'm sorry, I'm missing this circle of courage. One of the things I'll say is that, um, Boundary School District uses circle of courage through their whole district. And they are an extra small rural district, but their student achievement and student outcomes are quite high. And one of the things that kind of cements the district together is this program. Um, so I was excited to see that it's being offered locally.
I have a question. I don't think it's on your report though, but it's just this little, this little thing about dual credit. I'm just trying to remember, there's something in my, I have a, there's something about the nursing program. There is some type of dual credit healthcare now, isn't there?
Yeah, there's a couple of things going on there. There's ministry pilots, first of all, in terms of encouraging, uh, more students get involved. And, and, uh, we also have dual credit and they're, I think Nicole, they're calling them the, is it the ancillary or the auxiliary health services?
Yeah. Like, so it's not on here?
No.
Okay.
But, uh, definitely absolutely part of the program.
Okay.
And adventures in healthcare and, uh, there's a, there's a lot of, and only growing well every year, the connection to healthcare. And we have a committee with Northern Health on career pathways, ways to inform the K to twelve system better. So that's also coming.
But when you mentioned ventures in healthcare, that is probably, it's not on here because it's not necessarily part of the dual credit.
It's not necessarily part of the program.
It's post-seconded.
That's right.
Okay. All right. Any other questions there?
Helen, I forgot to mention, you, you don't have it, but, uh, each of the trustees has a draft poster.
Yep.
As well as a security card, which, which is a little reminder that we can leave with staff near the computers, just how to lock them. And the poster you have will go out as part of a district-wide campaign and be in every room similar to the health and safety poster here in the boardroom. And the team has put together what they would consider to be the key elements for staff to follow when it comes to cybersecurity. So this is going to be an annual reminder, but we're going to have this information posted up in every room in the district.
So in terms of our, um, risk assessment in that cybersecurity handout, that ties in with some of the stuff that we did when we did that risk assessment at the first part of our term and we, I don't think we had fleshed out the cybersecurity at that point in time. So those two documents going together, um, would be good down the road.
Well, and the nice thing is Helen and trustees that Focus Ed, which is partnering with the ministry on this, has really provided clear framework now for where we should be going in terms, because this is part of risk assessment. And so this is, this is quite practical for us and the team was very excited to use it as to, to determine how they were doing.
When you look at those ten things within cybersecurity and you look at our, our policy, is there anything missing from our policy to hit those ten aspects?
Well, my initial read was, I don't think so because in addition to the paragraph I've put here for the public, there are a few specific bullets within the policy itself that actually talks about security and the use of technology by staff, which for, at least for staff right now, gives us that umbrella of the board mandate that, 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 that seems to be okay for now.
Okay. Right, was just checking.
Question for Thomas. Um, my first part is a statement. Um, knowledge is great, uh, I gotta say, and they're doing an amazing job keeping everybody informed. Um, the only feedback that I would have is you say verify requests for information. I find that a lot of. I find that a lot of the time they'll email back, hey, do you actually need this? And they're emailing back to the same person. So making a phone call, texting the person directly. Create a new email saying. This is their email, it's just in a format that isn't the same email.
Got it. We'll take a look at that. Thank you.
You'll know the answer to this. When it says hover over links to verify the URL. How does hovering over it verify it?
It doesn't verify it. It tells you where it's going. So like.
So if it looks suspicious, then don't click?
Exactly.
Oh, okay. I was thinking.
Maybe you're getting something from B C Hydro when you click over the URL, it could be to something.
Yeah, okay.
Before you click.
Before you click, yeah, hover.
Hover your, your, your mouse over.
Okay. This made it sound like once I hover something will then verify like. Don't do it, Nicole. Okay.
It's all about education.
Okay.
Okay.
Any questions related to the other parts of Stephen's report that he's zooming through?
I'm sorry.
That's okay. I don't see anybody jumping. Right? Okay. So. I'm going to call the question on that part of Stephen's report. All in favor? In favor? Thank you. And now we'll go to the two things that we had to pull some motions out for. Could I please have somebody make the motion that the Board of Education approved the attached out of district field trips? As presented? Moved by Bill, seconded by David. Right? And moving on to community coaches, could I please some, have somebody make the motion that the Board of Education approved? The attached community coaches as presented?
Could you call for a vote for the out of district field?
Sorry, thank you. All, calling the question now, all in favor? Right? And I'm just going to comment, it was pretty exciting to see that there's a 101 team coming in. To play in one of the tournaments. I was excited to see that, so. Now, the motion for community coach that the Board of Education approved the attached community coaches as presented. Moved by Ida, seconded by Nicole. Calling question? All in favor? In favor? Great. I think we did your stuff, Stephen.
Thank you.
Now it's Angela's turn.
Let's see. For my report, I have the finance update, update to September 30th, 2024. I provided you with an enrollment, enrollment update based on our first submission of the 1701 and then an HR. Support staff summary report dated September 21st to October. And that is my report.
Right? Can I please have, I don't, there isn't any separate motions to vote, so can I have a mover and a seconder? Moved by Bill, seconded by Thomas. Discussions. First thing, the finance update. Any questions or comments? Angela, the benefits piece, can you, you've got a, a bit of a. Descripter in there about that? Can you explain a little bit more because I didn't quite understand it?
Yeah, so generally, so the benefits percentage that we. Base our calculations are. Is for the entire year. So we do our projection and we. Use roughly, depending on what group it is, there's different percentages now. It only looks like it's 12.2%, which. Is, is quite low, so I thought I should put an explanation in there that lots of people are already maxed out on their CPPEI and WCB because their wages have. Already hit that threshold.
Okay.
Probably in the 70,000 range. So then. Our benefits drop drastically kind of from summer to the end of December and then in January we see a spike. So it all balances out through the year.
Okay, thank you. I just wasn't quite getting that, so. Madeline?
I'm happy to have a question, so. On miscellaneous revenue? I even pulled it and had it on my desk today. Oh, good. No, I'm actually not gonna, no, you did a nice breakout of what it is, I just, because it's so much higher and. Does that just simply mean that it was under budget or is it kind of? Because it's not like an expense where you varied, it seems to be kind of.
Yeah, so in the previous year I estimated double that, so I was at 300,000 and I never even came close to achieving. This year, we sold two buses, so that went into the miscellaneous ones.
That's where the spike is.
I knew you were, I knew you were gonna ask me. I was ready for you. I like to be prepared. Uh-oh, Thomas, I don't know what you're gonna ask, so I'm ready.
Um, I know when we chatted, when we were looking at the entire budget, we talked about decreasing the. Snowfall clearing budget. Did we, did we end up decreasing it or did we kind of leave it where it was because it was going to be a rough? Likely going to be a rough.
Did I, was it the snow removal budget, budget or was it the fuel that I decreased? I think I dropped the fuel.
It was, I think, I, I know, I think we were talking specifically about snow clearing.
The snow removal budget is just a few contractors, so I, I kind of left them alone, but the fuel I did. Drop down, so. I guess maybe the joke. I was trying to. Ward off the snow, but it was, I believe it was fuel. But we're having an earlier start with buses running.
Yes.
I think. Right? The enrollment report that was attached, questions related to if.
Well, it looks like you were. Prebound. Well, that can't, that can't be easy to predict. It was a team effort and I think we were closer this year than we have been in previous years for sure, so. Again, this is based on the initial 1701. I think we could be up or down. I heard. Four people today, four students, so it will be, it's not exact, exact, but.
Yeah, we're equal, so no.
But we haven't lost a bunch, so we're in trouble.
No. No, we, we went up a bit, so.
What's the online learning? Like, there seems to be that great, like, 3, 10, 12? That was just a surprise that that, because it's province-wide or?
3, 10, 12.
We estimated 90 and that's the, no, 9,000?
90.90.
90, yeah. Where are you looking, sorry?
Or the yellow.
The second.
Oh, the second, so down below, the February make counts are still the original estimates. So. Column B, C, D, there's no change, but A. Yeah, we could definitely be coming in a bit. A bit low. Now that 140, I believe has to do. With us being able to, like, we're capturing some of the WEC students. The work experience students now, so those numbers. Will learn will be higher and we, we should be able to capture that as the year goes on in our amended budgets.
And there's no more, no other questions related to that? Let's take a look at your human resources support staff summary. Any questions related to this? I'm just curious as to whether we have all of our EA positions hired or we've got a lot of postings still out?
That's a great question.
There's still some postings out, Helen, definitely more staff than we were. At the last board meeting, especially as the hours and allocations continue to evolve at the schools. And we now have some other requests for additional support that will mean further hours or postings for EA's.
Okay. All right, if there's no other questions, calling the question, all in favor of accepting Angela's report? In favor? It's carried.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number 10. Reports of the regular committee of the whole meeting of October the 7th, which is pages 19 to 20 in your package.
While we're reading through this, can I throw out something, Helen?
Yeah.
I would just like to be in attendance at the Remembrance Day ceremony for Fort St. John.
Okay. We, I'll, I'll talk about that when we get to unfinished business.
Hey, sorry.
Can I please have a mover and a seconder for this? Moved by David, seconded by. Bill. You just seconded this. All right, any errors or omissions? Calling the question then, all in favor? Carried. So business arising, and I may need Leah's help here. We, for Fort St. John or for all of the ceremonies where we're going to do wreaths, she actually has to. Identify who is doing the presenting. And I got, she did send me a copy of the letter earlier, so for Thomas's question. Leah, is there a space on that form for one name or two names?
It's not, it's not a form, we just. Are we, are we doing that now or unfinished business? I thought. I'll be headed under 11 points.
Yeah, right now on the agenda, it's, it was within.
Okay.
Where was it?
114 unfinished business. Are we doing business arising?
I'm doing it as business arising, sorry. Sorry if I said it wrong. Yeah, no, I was doing it as business arising. So. We can. Send two people from that letter? Leah?
You can send how many, every people that you want. It's not a form.
All right, so for Fort St. John, we have trustee Snow and trustee Witten. Trustee Campbell is confirmed for Taylor.
And also David's going to come.
Okay.
And we probably will have some students.
Okay. David's gonna come. Cecil. Cecil Lake, Vice Chair Lehman's going. And Hudson Hope, are you in town this year, Nicole?
I'm in town hosting a large family dinner, but I will attend this ceremony first.
Thank you.
With some students, yeah.
Okay. So does that do what you needed, Leah?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Right, we don't. Have any other business arising?
I just had a question about the whole meeting out there. I just wanted to ask you, since it was the first kind of one we did out somewhere? How did the, did the festival presentation look a lot like it would if they were sitting here or did they expand it or include students or?
Well, I'll give you my perspective. It was a bit different because it was also a grand, kind of gym slash school opening.
Yeah.
So we might want to save that question for a more regularly looking visit to a school. What I can say though, as to the whole rationale for this in the first place. Being on site physically, going through the rooms, actually getting a real sense for trustees of what these spaces look like. And the kids.
Yeah.
I, absolutely worth it. But the whole full committee and the whole experience, we, we will have to see.
I, I think what was nice for me in having that on site. Was I had the before and after of the upgrades to the buildings. I can remember looking at the flooring when we were out discussing what would. You know, why Upper Halfway needed a gym. And to walk in and see that changed flooring, it just gave a, a completely different feel to the building. And Upper Halfway is not a place I run to all the time, so. I wouldn't have seen it if we hadn't been there for that.
So at the risk of. So the next time we're out on site is?
Um, Monday, November the 4th.
Yeah.
At Duncan Grant.
Okay, yeah, it's in there. Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Do that.
Yeah.
Right? Any other questions? Okay. And we don't have anything at this point for policy committee, so moving on to other reports, 11.1. B C S T A trustee Campbell, anything you want to let us know about provincial council?
There are no motions at this time to go to provincial council. And we will be talking about the. The budget and also a non-voting student delicacy at the B C S T annual general meeting. That's the two items we will be discussing at this. And I'll bring back a report.
Thank you. All right, so those of us that were able to attend N I B. Just an opportunity to report out now on that meeting. To bring some information back for others who are unable to attend, so. I don't know if Madeline or Bill wants to start?
Bill is sending a line. Take my note. Is that who went, three of you? Yeah.
Yeah, and we had Angela and Stephen there. Two. I mean, I can start. I was glad that the B C S T A had released the Rural and Remote Network Interim Report. So that that could be the basis of the presentation on the Friday night. It's clear that our discussion about building relationships for advocacy and work with new MLAs and local governments was. An opportune one. And. There's work that will happen there. Saturday's. Was owned by the B C S T A and it started off with Tracy Lauffer and the Framework for Continuous Improvement. We were doing a lot of what. She had to say and it wasn't really. Breaking news for us. Then before lunch, we had Finesc present their, how, and how are we doing? And it's really clear that Finesc. How? Holds some weight with government. And they're asking really hard questions about attendance data and want. I don't know. Clarity around processes and. I'm going to use the word calibration. Criteria so that we're comparing apples to apples. When it comes to attendance data, so it will be interesting to see what comes out of their, their work. The most favorite part for me was the report on child childcare with Dr. Charlesworth. I quite liked her presentation style. And she provided us with a lot to think about. And then woven throughout the day was teaching related to eco-cycle planning. And it certainly, I think, is a potential tool for us to use as a board at advance. Throughout the day, we were, we were challenged to, and Stephen helped me, I can't remember what process board was trying to put us through. To come up with. A, a question and then what our action was going to be.
Yeah, it was like a parking lot throughout the day for what pieces trustees both need to want to be aware of. Or to lead into action on.
So. Bill and. Bill and Madeline, your thoughts?
You touched on the rural and remote, I think that's quite a robust document. I appreciated all the different districts broken out. And I was surprised to see that we have 40 rural districts and 20 urban. And the way they categorize them, so I thought that was interesting, a little tidbit.
How many? Say that number again.
Forty, like, out of the 60 districts, 40 are categorized for rural and 20 urban. And then they separate the rural into small, medium, or whatever, but still, there's only 20 urban. So I think it's a good document that definitely, because you can all do cross referencing. I appreciated, I mean, you know how it is, you take something home that probably wasn't the main gist of the presentation, but Tracy's little Toyota clip.
Yeah.
It was a good one, it was basically how Toyota shared how to improve, and the phrase that was there is, if you do it well, share it. And I just, it was kind of a, it was an ad clip, but not really, but it was a good, I thought, yeah, that's a good reminder on how to process, yeah.
Who's Tracy?
Lauffer, she's the vice chair of BCSTA, she did.
I recognize her, I think that name sounds.
So she did a presentation, and I, Bill forwarded the finesse presentation. It was interesting because there were some questions asked about the difference, difference between First Nation and Indigenous and got a bit of an explanation from Debbie that surprised me. Because now, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Indigenous includes Métis and Inuit and First Nation does not. I have never been aware of that, so. Yeah.
Okay, say that again. What you just said.
First Nation?
Yeah.
Is, okay, no, I'll explain. Indigenous, Indigenous includes Métis and Inuit and First Nation does not.
Indigenous includes First Nation, like three of them, okay. So this is the First Nation education, Finesse is just First Nations and not Métis and Inuit.
Well, they do have them in there as well, but it came down to when she was talking about rights to air, water, and land.
So it's the distinction-based approach that is now basically enshrined in legislation.
Bill?
All righty, so the finesse one for me, there was bits, pieces, bits and pieces kind of thing that, you know, definitely caught me. There was a lot to it. Again, like Madeline said, the breakdown with the rural and remote, I like that. And I mean, and the big thing with going there is the networking, I mean, the, and I talked to her so many times, the lady we were sitting with.
Marissa.
Yes, talking to her and like, you know, we talk about our rural schools. I mean, she has to go five hours to get a Tim Hortons coffee. Kind of thing. You know, like they're at the, and that's not even the most rural stuff they have, I mean, they have a boat that goes to pick up kids. So I mean, just talking to those people and, you know, connecting the rural and remote and what, what rural is considered. And then hearing firsthand kind of thing, you know, what rural is. I mean, not to take away from what we call rural, but, you know. I caught about 20 minutes, a half hour or so of the one Saturday afternoon with the doctor. Hey, I've heard her talk before. You know, that, that whole subject is pretty dear to me, but I mean, you know, it's a because my, you know, work kind of thing. And just, and the other thing they were talking about was the attendance stuff and people are bringing up, you know, the attendance here compared to Fort Nelson, compared to Vancouver kind of thing. You know, when you look into the reasoning why. They gotta look at that too, kind of thing. But no, it was interesting.
District staff, any comments?
Nothing new that's not already being stated, I think I did pass on some data to Helen and the Rural and Remote Committee. For some data that we collect annually, the snapshot on October 1st of how many LOPs, but we're trying to be more specific now between headcount and FTE. And so I think that was, is still a compelling picture to that work.
Yeah, I would thought I'd bring that back to committee the whole day.
Yeah, good idea, sorry, yeah, so.
That's okay. Ida?
Yeah, I just have a question, was there a bit represented from branch? Like, I know for a while, really, we had small numbers and then it got larger again. So was there quite a few trustees and staff there? Was there?
Friday was low.
Friday there was 35 and if you do the math, if you do the math, well, I did the math. And you looked at the numbers of district staff and trustees throughout the whole NIB, it's 68. So we had 35 there and all of the districts for the branch were represented except Fort Nelson. And Linda did zoom in on for Dr. Charlesworth's presentation. It was a little bit lower than what we had at our February meeting last year. And then there was more people that came on the Saturday for the BCSTA learning series. It was a different blend because it wasn't really fully NIB, NIB's stuff.
And then, you know, Williams, like, a lot of them left at lunch. I mean, there was really good representation and engagement from the southeast, or sorry, from the northeast. Like Dawson Creek and Fort St. John, for sure, because I mean, they're the ones preparing all of this work too. And I, and Quinell was a robust presence as well throughout the weekend, so that was good to see too, but really, the Northeast is kind of leading the work of the NIB right now.
And the one thing that really came out in the finesse presentation to build on what's already been said, the distinctions-based approach was that there was questions posed by trustees from Quinell who are of Métis ancestry. And it was basically that's not who we're focused on and you're not First Nations. So there was a bit of a tone and that is out there and that was one of the reasons that for our last regular board meeting, I'd attach some of the correspondence that I had from the Métis Association and then the First Nations response. It's, it's going to be out there and we'll be dealing with some of the feelings around it. Is that fair to say, Stephen?
Yeah, I think, I think we're in a good place on this board and then those conversations continue with Indigenous Education Council, but in a very constructive and, you know, educational way.
So, Bill mentioned something about, in that sudden finesse presentation that talked about attendance. So, the difference between here and the South, like, can you elaborate, like, what did they say the differences are in attendance stats?
I didn't think it was as much as the difference, but that we need to have consistency in what we record and how we record too. I felt that was more the bigger question, you know, if you just do the first thing in the morning? Or do you do it every class, or do you just, that there has to be more?
And this is Finesse wanting this?
No, that was a, they do too.
And Finesse wanting to, for high school instead of by block attendance, which leads to a really misleading number, this huge massive number. Where, you know, when we're in high school, it's just one day, right, are you in? And then which, which block are you missing? So they want to see those comparatives presented in a way that makes sense.
Okay. But there's still the general idea that there's terrible attendance, like that's a provincial.
There's a very, there's a very strong correlation, again, some of the elephants in the room. A very strong correlation between attendance of our unreserved First Nation students and their graduation and achievement rates.
And they're not, they're not thinking that that's because of the way attendance is recorded, or?
No, they just want it, they just want the clear data so that it's obvious to everyone.
They brought up an example of a dad going away. Was it dad went away for a course, I think it was? And the whole family went with him? You remember that?
I do, and so that was, in fact, I think it was just recently talking to Jaclyn about a family there where, yeah, they, the family will go away. But that's not just the First Nations thing though, we're talking about, it's in general at that point where these days, a family goes to do something, they just take all their kids with them, it's a much more accepted, good or bad, practice. And some people brought up where some First Nations, and rightly so, will do some of their traditional activities like hunting and gathering, those kinds of things at different times of the year. And so maybe part of it is what we consider to be absent or educational, but that's going down another couple of different levels.
I just, I think that they echoed the concern about attendance and said they've asked the hard questions and are looking for some response from the ministry. And when I look at our own vessel and, you know, the fact that many of the people in our district are concerned about attendance and the connection to achievement. It was conversation that I think will continue.
Senator. And Helen, it doesn't seem like it's any different than the questions at the meetings you and I were present with the Indigenous. All the questions we were asked, they were asking the same thing. Like, is it one walk or is it all day? Is it five absentee or is it one student, but, you know, so we did discuss that.
Can I?
Yeah.
So we're actually talking about going to a wedding. Just happens to be the week after spring break of next year. It's just a pain in the butt. My boys, we didn't want them having three weeks off school, so we're going to go to the teacher and ask for some work to catch up. I know that it's not the opportune and, I mean, they're going to miss an extra week. Is there room for us to work on educating the parents and say, hey, go talk to your teachers? If you are taking the time off and, you know, go get that work up front. Potentially just creating that communication lane.
Yeah, sorry Helen, go ahead.
Well, I think we're, what the communication piece needs to be that attendance matters.
That's definitely the message we'd like to bring from staff and we're sort of working on. However, to, to your point, Thomas, communication on absences is always a good thing. Sometimes it's for hospitalization, sometimes it's for different reasons and connecting with your teacher is a good message no matter what. We are though, also trying to readjust some of those societal norms that have creeped in over the last 10 years around attitudes towards attendance. And we can't just throw our hands up because some people have been quite successful in how they've created some incentive programs, how they've set targets for different grades and for schools. I was in Hudson's Hope and they had some great data they were showing there, pre-COVID and post-COVID with different cohorts. And now they're coming up with a plan of, you know, they're going to have like targets for the month by grade and things like that. So there's things we can do, but it is about adjusting some of the norms and values around attendance.
And also, I don't know, Stephen, if this is a different rabbit hole, but I've heard many a times from teachers that they do not want 15 parents coming to them and saying, my kid's missing a week, can I get a bunch of homework? Because that is above and beyond their job, they, you know, like, so while it's the responsible thing to do, if you have 15 parents coming to you to give them, because then they have to get the homework together, they have to think, what am I doing that week that they're not going to be here? So Joe, you have to do this, Suzie, you have to do this. Some teachers will just tell you to jump in the lake, if you're not going to be here, you're not going to be here, right? And, and fair enough, because if they make it that, if they make it that easy for us all to miss a week of school here and there, then what's the message?
Yeah, and thanks for reasoning that, I think it's a balance because sometimes absences are just going to happen. And if there is, there is a professional responsibility to provide information. To actually prepare a bunch of work though, can, can be an extra task, particularly when the absent goes on for a while. And by the way, sometimes that work gets done by the kids, sometimes it doesn't. And then sometimes it's not even as related or helpful to the in-person experience in the first place. So we'll try to keep things relatively simple, again, without not going down too many rabbit holes. The messaging and the work of the committee that we have in the district, which by the way, is going to come back to you after Christmas. It's going to be about some of those pieces we can do around the bigger attendance picture. Attend school because it matters.
It is, it is interesting because my own, my own, my own head, when my kids were really young, I was like, what's a week of school? And I haven't got out of that mindset. And it's my kids now saying, a week of school's big, mom, like, I can't do it. And they're the ones telling me, don't book that trip, we can't, right? So, and there's a lot of kids that wouldn't tell their parents, that would be like, woo, we're going, right? So it is a mindset where we all got into, oh, they'll learn more on vacation than they will in school. And it's, I don't know, it just seems different than when I was a kid, we didn't miss school.
And just to add though, I cannot, particularly for our middle and lower cohorts of students, is particularly impactful. There's, there's a cohort of students that no matter what we do in our education system will probably be just fine. But with the middle and the lower group, not so much. By the way, in Hudson's Hope, secondary attendance remains strong pre and post COVID because they have this incentive related to their social responsibility trip.
Yeah, plus there's nowhere to go.
Right, but so it's surprising, it's surprising what a couple of strategies, you wouldn't think, a contest or a strategy.
Making that fourth ethics honor roll is a big deal in Hudson's Hope.
So that's a culture developed over years, but it means we can, it reminded me that we actually can do some things about it, but we cannot fix attendance, we can do our best with it.
Yeah, all I wanted to say was, yes, attendance is, is really important and we're working on that. But also, for what you asked the question of, communication to your teacher is a depth, regardless whether it's attendance or something else going on, it really helps the teachers. But I agree with Nicole that don't expect them to do something extra special because you won't take your kids out. That's what I've heard too.
Yeah, I think the reason that I had prefaced that was that, you know, just build that communication, have those conversations. Regardless of how they go, have the conversation, that's right.
Communication is at the foundation of a lot of the things we talk about here.
All right. Moving on, BCPC, Madeline.
Well, I mean, you have received mail and then I realized, because Helen reminded me that I did, I did look at it but never forwarded, but I did now, you have it, about the conflict of interest.
There, and there, there are some presentations being made that you can sign up for on that, aren't there?
There is, on October 24th and October 29th. It sounds like, I don't think it's going to be a different presentation, it sounds the 24th is more for the reps and superintendent and the C and the 29th is for any trustee. But the gist of it is that the material hasn't, the updated, it's not really change in the material, so to speak, but it's maybe more providing clarity with cases that, you know, they've seen come across their desks and stuff. So I don't think there's any big changes per se, it's just again, it's a big, especially in a bargaining year, it's going to be a topic again about ratifying and all that. So if you want to attend a webinar, you have to register, it's in that email, there's a link to register, you just click that and you'll just be in it on team.
So I'll be honest, I didn't, I've seen your email, but I didn't read it all, so is the BCPC, did they try to go to somebody and say, you can't, can't all be in conflict, we can't do our job? And you're saying that there's been no change, we still are in conflict?
Yeah, yeah.
Did they try to get us out of it, is that what the work was, or?
I don't know if that's what the work was, I mean, the way I understand it, it's more like I said, because they talked about an updated version or revised version, whatever, it is not necessarily like the actual case, it has not changed. Your conflict has not changed.
Still of her daughters.
Yeah.
The foundational elements that existed last year have not changed. They have just confirmed legally that this is the interpretation of conflict of interest that they're moving forward with.
And there was some clarification. And there was some clarification in it though, for me, that what I thought was coming from law is coming from within the School Act, um, with the children, adult children. And it's related to things right in the School Act. And so asking for some changes to what they've got in the School Act might address some of the situations that we find ourselves in.
But, but not for this round?
Not for this round, no. Not for this round.
There's a nice color coded, I think, too, as to, you know, this is no questions asked. Do you are in conflict? There's no wiggling there. And then.
A lot of us are in a yellowy-orange zone.
Actually, exactly.
Bill's red.
Yeah.
We're yellow-orange.
But where do we sit on this board now?
I'm still in conflict because I have a daughter that works in the school.
I shouldn't be though, right?
You had a daughter.
Oh, right. At their district.
In two weeks. I'm double red.
But, but if I can, uh, um, Madeline, at least we have a bit more runway this time for our ST to be able to line these things up in terms of getting ratification when the time comes.
Yeah.
But I feel I'm in more conflict now because Deb works in the schools always where Marc and Deb did. So I'm still.
So you're doubling up too.
Yeah.
Making sure.
Trying to get less conflict.
You're, you're, you're orange. No, actually, yeah. Okay.
So that's on that one. And I will attend the symposium early November. There is, yes, a lot of bargaining sessions, which I appreciate because I, I think I will be sitting in. And, um, just for information to Angie Delaney, who was the director for NIB on the BCPC is in conflict now. So there's going to be another election because she was not up for election at the AGM in January, but this position for NIB will come if not open again.
Yep. How does somebody run now that the NIB meeting's over?
Doesn't matter. Uh, uh, you get nominated from your board. Okay. And then you just put your nomination in and. Hold it.
Great. Item number, uh, I just lost my place. Um, we're on to Board Pro D and I don't believe there's anything for Pro D. Um, so we're on to item number twelve, the amended capital plan bylaw, which involves lots of reading. So.
Yes. Sorry, this is a amendment number three. So, but with each amendment, we get more good things for schools. So and Helen gets to read the bylaws.
That's, that's okay.
So the addition is the Dr. Kearney, um, additions. So.
So here goes. What I need is a motion that in accordance with section sixty-eight four of the School Act, all three readings of the Capitol bylaw n- number twenty, twenty-four, twenty, twenty-five, CPSD sixty dash O three be given at this meeting. So can I have a mover and a seconder? Moved by Madeline, seconded by Nicole. Calling the question. All in favor? In favor? All right. I'm going to do the first reading now. This is Capitol bylaw numbered twenty, twenty-four, twenty, twenty-five, CPSD sixty dash O three. Whereas in accordance with section one forty-two of the School Act, the Board of Education of School District Number Sixty, Peace River North, here and after called the Board, has submitted a capital plan to the Minister of Education, here and after called the Minister. And the minister has approved the capital plan or has approved a capital plan with modifications. Now therefore, in accordance with section one four-three of the School Act, the Board has prepared this capital bylaw and agrees to do the following. Authorize the Secretary Treasurer to execute a capital project funding agreement or agreements related to the capital project or projects contemplated by the capital plan or the capital plan with modifications. Upon ministerial approval to proceed, commence the capital project or projects and proceed diligently and use its best efforts to complete each capital project substantially as directed by the minister. Observe and comply with any order, regulation or policy of the minister as may be applicable to the Board or the capital project and projects. And maintain proper books of account and other information and documents with respect to the affairs of the capital project or projects as may be prescribed by the minister. Now therefore, the Board enacts as follows. The Capitol bylaw of the Board for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five capital plan as approved by the minister to include the supported capital projects specified in the letter addressed to the Secretary Treasurer and Superintendent dated September twenty-fifth, twenty, twenty, twenty-four is hereby adopted. This capital bylaw may be cited as School District Number Sixty, Peace River North Capitol bylaw number two, twenty, twenty-four, twenty-five, CPSD sixty dash O three. So could I please have a mover that that first reading be adopted? Moved by David, seconded by Nicole. Calling the question. All in favor? Thank you. Uh, now we're going to, I need a motion that the second and third reading be read in short form. Ida and Thomas. Calling the question. All in favor of short form reading? Thank you. All right. Moving forward with the second reading in short form. Um, according to one, section one forty-two of the School Act, we've split, submitted a capital plan to the Minister of Education. And based on section one forty-three of the School Act, we prepared it. And we've agreed to do all the things the ministry expects us to do. And we are going to follow through with what was in the letter that was sent on September twenty-fifth, twenty, twenty-four. And we have, are adopting, uh, the Capitol bylaw number twenty-four, twenty-five, CPSD sixty dash O three. That is our second reading. So could I please have a mover and a seconder? Moved by Bill, seconded by Thomas. Calling the question. All in favor? Third and final reading, I guess it has to be a little bit more than read the letter, but it's, we're looking at Capitol bylaw number twenty, twenty, for twenty, twenty-four, twenty, twenty-five, CPSD sixty dash O three that is based in the letter that was sent September twenty-fifth. And we are adopting it and moving forward with the projects outlined in it with all the expectations for fiscal responsibility that are given. And so this Capitol bylaw now may be cited as School District Number Sixty, Peace River North Capitol bylaw number twenty, twenty-four, twenty-five, CPSD sixty dash O three. So I'm looking for a mover and a seconder for the funny third reading. Moved by David, seconded by Madeline. Calling the question. All in favor? In favor? All right. So now that we've done all of that, um, does anybody have any questions related to what came in that letter? Anything that you need clarified or was it all totally clear?
Doesn't necessarily, doesn't necessarily have to do with the letter itself, but, uh, with regards to the project, it'll go out to RFP. And then there will be somebody on our staff that will liaise with the lead contractor to make sure it goes off without a hitch.
Cool. So we'll determine, um, if we get a construction manager or not, because it is like a bit different in scale than, uh, school. But from joining in on the prefab, they have been hiring construction managers as well. So.
So Angela, if you go to page four and you look at the paragraph that deals with school site acquisition charges, does that apply to us?
Um, the school site acquisition charges, we do, we do collect them. But it, it's only, um, it only applies when we're purchasing sites. So we would have to use those when we're, um, trying to, if they approve us, say, in the five-year plan, we put, have those two plots of land, we would have to use those, uh, towards that.
Okay. I just wasn't quite sure what all of that meant and thought, well, they put it in the letter related to us. So are we doing that?
No, I, I think because they would put everything in the letter. Um, like if you purchased a site, if you were a district that was purchasing a site, they would have the site in this letter and then this would apply to that.
Okay.
Kind of like a, yeah, just a standard.
Then she looked at the dates. They want everything done by, they don't go with their climate very well. But.
No, they don't.
Okay.
Fortunately, our, our construction companies and, um, are, are used to the climate. Does slow things down and get more expensive, but.
Okay. Any other questions related to the letter? Great. I don't have any other correspondence. I don't have any new business. We don't have PINTA there, QP or District Parent Advisory Council. We don't have any press. So, uh, could I get a motion that we suspend the regular meeting and move into our in-camera meeting? Moved by David, seconded by Thomas. All in favor? In favor? Leah, please stop the recording. Thank you. Can I please have a motion that the in-camera motions be brought forward for implementation? I need a mover and a seconder. Moved by Thomas, seconded by Nicole. Calling the question. All in favor? Thanks, Bill. Carried. Right. Could I please get a motion to adjourn? Moved by David, seconded by Nicole. Calling the question. All in favor? Leah, please stop the recording.